Welcome to the Milton School Board of Education meeting, Monday, April 23rd. It is 6:33. We called the meeting to order, we've done that. Tom or American, as our tradition would ask at this time, you please stand and join the Milton School Board in the federal allegiance to our-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is tradition here in the Milton School District, with this being my last board meeting, I do have a few prepared remarks that I would like to share with you before the oath of office is administered to our new school board candidates as a result of the recent election. And at the conclusion of my remarks, Mr. Tom Westrick, in his role as Vice President of the school board, will continue with the meeting. And so with that, I think I'll just start out by saying, first and foremost, I would like to acknowledge and thank the past and present students of the School District of Milton for making all of us so proud to serve you. Over the years, our pre-K-12 enrollment has grown to over 3,500 students. Simply put, you are why we all do what we do. You, as well as our students of the future, are why we serve. I am grateful to the community for your trust and confidence by electing me six times to serve on the board since 1997, and allowing me the privilege and honor to serve the educational needs of our students for the past 18 years. I would like to recognize Betsy Lovekey, who's not here this evening, for her past eight years of dedicated service to this district. Her human resource background, experience, guidance, and leadership will be sorely missed. On behalf of myself and the entire board, we wish Betsy and her family the very best. In addition to Betsy, I would also like to thank the other five board members that I've served with this past year. Thank you, Tom, Shelley, Karen, Don, and Brian, for your service and advocacy for our students. Beyond these six board members that I have most recently served with, I would also like to recognize and extend a thank you to the 12 other past board members that I've served with since 1997, some of whom are here this evening. Linda Hanneman, Jim O'Leary, Janet Flaherty, Al Rail, Wilson Leong, Mike Pierce, Dale Beatty, Sue Johnson, Rob Roy, Jan B. Wells, Janet Green, and John Cruzan. Since I first joined the board in 1997, these aforementioned 18 individuals and myself accumulated 190 years of board service, serving the students of our district. I learned something working with each and every one of these people, and credit them and school boards before us for developing the positive culture for public education here in Milton. A properly functioning school board helps develop the culture and sets the tone and direction for the district. Although we are not always unanimous in our decisions, we strive to be respectful of each other's opinion, realizing each of us has something unique to offer. In the words of my former junior high school English teacher and former board colleague, the late Mrs. Janet Flaherty, "Mr. Cullen, we should be able to agree to disagree without being so disagreeable." I say good luck to the next school board and all boards to follow. Congratulations, Diamond, Brian, and Joe, on your most recent election to serve. This new board will have many important decisions to make, and I wish you all the very best. I want to thank our dedicated professional educator staff, our administrative team, teachers, aides, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, office staff, food service, transportation folks, crossing guards, and everyone else for providing our students a positive pre-K-12 education experience here in Milton. As important as all of our staff, I would also like to make a big shout-out to our students' parents, and thank them for their support and shared responsibility in educating their children. It has been said that parent is not only a child's first teacher, but they are the most important. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the taxpayers for their financial support and shared responsibility to help continue making Milton schools strong. I would not have been able to serve all these years without the support of my employer, and so I'd like to thank the Bank of Milton for allowing me the time away from work to serve our community. A school board's greatest responsibility is the district superintendent. I and other board members previously mentioned have had the opportunity and experience of working with seven such superintendents since 1997. Dr. John Platts, Doug Waitrovich, Peg Ekdahl, now Peg Hager, Bernie Nicolay, Dr. Mike Guero, Theresa Rousch, and now Dr. Tim Scheiger all served as our superintendent. Being a superintendent is not an easy job, but rather, a lifestyle. I have learned in my 18 years as a board member that you have to hire the best person possible, develop a trusting working relationship, support them in their day-to-day administrative decisions, and then let them do their job. When you have a good superintendent like we do, it is also important to take the time to recognize their value to our district. As the outgoing board president, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our current superintendent on his most recent academic achievement in earning his doctoral degree in education leadership from Edgewood College. Tim holds a bachelor's degree from Marquette University and a master's degree in educational leadership and administration from Cardinal Stritch University. He was hired in July of 2007 as the principal of Milton Middle School. He served as our Milton Middle School principal for six years before being named our superintendent almost five years ago, July of 2013. Tim has done an exceptional job here in Milton, initiating the region's first K-12 one-to-one technology program. During his tenure, we have seen increasing enrollment and increasing academic achievement, while presenting budgets that decreased local property taxes in four out of the last five years. Tim has guided the adoption of the School District of Milton strategic plan, and he works tirelessly to improve and maintain a healthy organizational climate that helps us recruit and retain high-quality staff. As a strong believer in education, he modeled a way for our students by earning his doctorate. I'm not sure when he found the time to do it. On behalf of the entire Board of Education, I wish to congratulate Dr. Timothy Scheiger on this outstanding educational achievement, and would like to present him at this time with a small token of our appreciation and congratulations, as well as the coveted Red Hawk recognition for a job well done. Congratulations. Don't you open that and put it right down there. Okay, right in front of you. Don't you open it right now and put it down there. Give Tim just a moment to open that, so he can display that. Okay, now it gets a little tougher. I would be remiss if I did not thank the most important person in my life. Sorry, Tim, that's not you. In June, my wife and I will celebrate 33 years of marriage. We moved back to Milton 28 years ago, when our oldest daughter Kaylee was one month old, in order to live and raise our family in the school district we both attended and graduated from. Since school choice did not even exist then, Shelley, we decided we better buy a house right in the middle of Milton, centrally located to the Milton schools at 242 Hill Top Drive, where we just recently became empty nesters. When you look out our front window, you're looking at the north end of the Carl F. Anderson Athletic Field, and a great view of Milton High School. For 18 of the past 28 years, since we moved back to Milton, I've had the opportunity to serve on the Milton School Board. This would not have been possible for two reasons, if, number one, the electorate would not have elected me, and number two, and most important, Marcy and our daughters Kaylee, Courtney, Claire did not support me. I also had the privilege of serving two years on the board, with my daughter Courtney, who's here this evening, as she served as the High School Student Council representative, just like Sean Harvateen and Anna Quatie. You know, although always supportive of my time away from home and family, I had a strong sense from Marcy initially, over 21 years ago, that she had some reservations about my interest in serving on the school board, because of the sometimes controversial and unpopular decisions that goes with the position. So like any good husband, I would say, "Honey, if I ever get on the board, don't worry about it. It's no big deal. It's only a couple Monday nights a month away from home." Well, that was the last of it. I said, "No more." Well, things went well the first couple of years I was on the board. In fact, it wasn't until about the third year that Marcy even realized I was on the board. And my absence from home was not attributed to a bimonthly Monday night men's bowling league at Marcy Elaine's that I told her I had joined. While it may be true, I attended many meetings in school even on sacrificing valuable family time, I always knew I had my wife's and daughter's support, and we all agreed that the sacrifice of family time was worth it. So, Marcy, thank you for your continued love, support, patience, many late-night, Monday night suppers, and understanding that I could only give you three minutes for your comments, with no immediate response from me when I came home later for meetings. You see, I sometimes forgot to take off my school board hat at home. If anyone were to ask me what was the best part of being on school board, I would say without hesitation, being in attendance and participating at Milton High School graduations as a board member, and on three occasions probably presenting diplomas to all three of our daughters. I want to publicly thank Marcy and our daughters Kaylee, Courtney, Claire for allowing me to be on the board tonight, and I especially thank Courtney, Claire, and Marcy for all being here this evening. I have observed and also been a part of approving many changes in the district over the past 21 years. Sometimes these changes were less than popular decisions. Please understand that as an individual board member, I always tried to make the best informed decision possible, with the best interests of our students and the School District of Milton in mind. At the end of the day, however, once a board makes a decision by a majority vote, that is what counts. A minority vote of the board always needs to respect and support the majority vote decision. The board should always speak with one voice. In conclusion, I would encourage all of us to continue supporting the district's strategic mission of opportunity, achievement, and community. I would also encourage anyone with an interest in serving the educational needs of students to also consider running for school board. It is a very rewarding experience. Thank you again for the opportunity to serve and for listening to my parting thoughts here this evening. Now, in the spirit of my other school district role as the public address announcer for wrestling matches and football games, I would like to conclude with an announcement. Thank you for attending tonight's school board meeting. Be sure to come back again. Go Red Hawks, and please, drive home safely. Thank you. So, I think with that, Tom, I turn it over to you.
Okay. So, one of the first things I want to do is, we have a couple of things for you. If you want to come around the front. I'm not sure why we got crowded back to the wall so much here.
I know. I feel like I'm a little crowded in here.
First of all, this is a certificate from WASB for your years of serving on the board.
Okay, thank you.
And this is from the rest of the board.
Okay.
I was going to say some things about Bob, but I decided not to. I'm not going to say any good things or any bad things.
Good.
I'm not going to say any good thing or bad things about Shelley, or I'm not going to say any good or bad things about Betsy.
Okay.
But I would like to thank Marcy and the girls, Wayne and Gary, for sharing your spouses with us.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Tom.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion that anybody would like to speak about Bob's service, or Betsy's service, or Shelley's service, that they should do at this time.
I would second that motion. If I have a motion to second all those, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Okay. So, anyone that would like to make some comments about our three outgoing board members, please come forward, state your name. And I don't even think we're going to hold it to three minutes tonight.
I'm John Cruzan, longtime Milton resident, live about 100 yards away from this area. This is my neighborhood. Served on the school board for nine years, haven't been around for about a year. Extremely interested in the school district and students. Spent a morning at the high school today, listening to seniors do their presentations, and had socks knocked off of me by the quality of those presentations. I have short comments I'd like to make about, not make about, but to each of the people you mentioned, Betsy, Shelley, and Bob. I won't do Betsy's, because she's not here, and I have directed it in a more personal way to her, and I will share that with her at another time. I thought she might be here tonight. But I'd like to address Shelley. First of all, where'd you go? I gotta see where you are. Shelley, you and I first became acquainted about 10 years ago, when you volunteered to become a member of the high school design team. Bill Wilson and I were privileged to co-chair that team of about 20 citizens, which was specifically charged with designing a new high school at that time. You were a chairperson's dream. Your enthusiasm, your diligence in completing homework and staying informed, as well as your active participation in discussions, tours, and all the other team activities we did was exceptional. You raised insightful and logical questions. You brought the unique perspective of being a teacher in another school district. You never lost sight of the fact that our purpose was focused on the kids. A few years later, you brought those same characteristics when you successfully ran for the school board. As president of the board at that time, I felt honored serving with you. Your energy, your preparation, your visibility in our buildings, coupled with your unflagging passion for our kids, made you an outstanding board member. You made a positive difference, Shelley, and of that, you should be proud. Thank you for your service. Bob, you're over there in the front row. I had to find you. You've had a couple of stints on the school board. Before I ran for the board the first time myself, I think you were in between stints on the board. I sought you out for advice about serving on the board. Other than that, you understated the time commitment by about half. Your advice served me well. Bob, you've served the community in so many ways. Many attending tonight probably recall that you were honored as Citizen of the Year several years ago. You're the play-by-play voice of Red Hawk football and wrestling. You have so many ties, so many connections, and so much service to countless organizations. When it comes to community service, you are an outlier when compared to the general population. So, what's this service about? I thought we should consider a root cause analysis. Now, I had researched the definition of root cause analysis and found about 33 pages worth of definition. I'm not going to go through all of those tonight. I landed on this, which is taking some significant liberty with the pure process improvement definition of root cause analysis, but I think it's more fitting with our generalized usage of that term. That definition is the fundamental reason for the occurrence of an issue. So I was looking for the fundamental reason of the service from a guy like Bob Cullen. So here's my take. You were raised in a loving family environment, full of values about how to live fully and contribute to the common good. You believe in something bigger than yourself. You are firmly rooted and enjoy a sense of belonging and contribution to the community. Not just any community, but our community, Milton. Bob, you exhibit no ambiguity when it comes to the question of, does the community owe us, or do we owe the community? It's very clear. You care about your family, you care about kids, and you care about the future for those coming after us. This is who you are. Your remarkable record of service is because you made a choice, a conscious decision to step up, to serve, to create a preferred future for those coming behind. What a record. What a legacy. Bob, my life is richer because of your record and your example. I've been blessed to serve with you. Let me leave you with this quote from Jim Will. "As individuals, everything we do affects our organizations, our community's culture. We have no choice whether or not we leave our mark. Our only choice is what type of mark we will leave." Thank you for your service.
Is there anyone else that would like to make a couple remarks about our outgoing board members?
It's a hard act to follow. I could never be that eloquent. Thank you, Mr. Cruzan. My name is Sarah Brechtel. I am a teacher at the high school. I've been in this district for six years. It is my third district in my teaching career, and I still have lots and lots and lots to learn. But I do know one thing, that a good school board member is not an automatic. It is not an automatic. It is a blessing, it is a necessity for teachers to feel secure, for us to feel supported, for us to feel confident. And we talk about supporting the children, and that is absolutely our first cause, our first priority. But when you have a school board and school board members who support us as teachers, it means the world. It makes a difference. And Mr. Cruzan said something about your visibility. And the three board members who are outgoing, and many others, we see you all the time. I knew who you were before I knew who you were. I recognized you as that lady at all the basketball games, or that man at graduation before I even knew you were a board member. And I can only express my appreciation, I don't mean to speak for the whole staff, and I'm going to go ahead and speak for the whole staff. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for supporting us. It makes a difference. We don't say it enough, but it matters. It matters that our school board members are out there, and you are at our sporting events, and our performances, and our ceremonies. We see you, we know you're there, we feel that you're there. We have a salary structure that makes us want to stay. We have a wonderful environment and administrators that make us want to stay. That's a big deal. That's a big deal. So, thank you. It is not an easy job, those of you that are still on the board, those of you that are coming in, those of you that are going out. It is not easy, and we know it. So, thank you for all that you do. The teachers appreciate it. We know how special you are. Enjoy your time.
Thank you, Ms. Brechtel. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item number C, which is the oath of office. So, Diamond, Brian, and Joe, if you'd come forward, please.
You take your seats.
No, I'll just go up front.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah. Brian, up front.
Right by your spots, you'll find your oath. Okay, Brian has his. Any order you like, just if you state your oath, and then sign the original copy for me, and you can keep the copy for yourself.
I'm Brian Lockwood. Having been elected to the Office of the Board of Education for the School District of Milton, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
I, Joe Martin, having been elected to the Office of the Board of Education for the School District of Milton, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
I, Deborah McKenna, having been elected to the Office of the Board of Education for the School District of Milton, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
Okay, let's give him a round of applause. Okay, moving on to item D, action on the agenda. Dr. Scheiger, any corrections on the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Cool. With that, I would support a motion to accept the agenda as written.
I make a motion that we accept the agenda as written.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Karen, and a second by Don. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Hearing none? Thank you. Action on the minutes, and that would be from our April 9th meeting.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from April 9th meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Don, a second from Karen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? So, move. The action on the vouchers. I make a motion that we accept vouchers for $845,945.97 drafted to the Bank of Milton, with a total of $395 in voids. Okay, we have a motion by myself, a second by Karen, on the vouchers. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose? Seeing none? Public comment. No one signed up. I do want to point out that there's a peach color sheet over by the public sign-in. That is our new board policy. It's actually called public participation, and those will be the new guidelines that will be followed in the upcoming meetings, so. Legislative report. Oh, I'm sorry. Student council. You guys are, your meetings are numbered here, especially you, Mr. Harvateen.
That's very true. All right. So, at our most recent meeting, we actually have a freshman student council member who's also a new student from Georgia. So, she's brought up a couple times this year that maybe we could do more to welcome those students who are coming from out of the district, as well as our foreign exchange students. So, we're going to start having a, what we're calling, August Hot Luck Dinner, to welcome those students to our community, as well as having regular meetings with them throughout the school year, to make sure they're feeling welcome and involved in our school community.
And then, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, the student council's planning a lunch for all the teachers, and the student council can be encouraged to write thank you notes to all the teachers and staff to show our appreciation for them.
Okay, any questions for either Sean or Ms. Quatie? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Now, on to the legislative.
First of all, in the state of Wisconsin, you know, there's a Blue Government Commission going across the state, looking at how we can fund schools differently. Today, I signed up to be informed when they get done with all of their meetings, to hear some of the testimony that they've heard throughout the state, and so I'll be learning more about it as we go on here. Then, I also want to, that's at the state level. At the federal level, I was invited to go out to Washington, DC, the 13th, 14th, and 15th of March, by Ed Snow, our technology director, because there was some advocacy for technology and other things going on at the federal level. So I want people to know that I went out to DC, I paid for the trip myself. It wasn't anything that the school district paid for, because I believe it was an important thing in my role as a school board member, and my role in the state, as a state member of the Committee on Education, to learn more about the issues of technology going on in our country. So I got to meet with representatives from ISTI, which is the International Society of Technology and Education. Really interesting, people from over the world, talking about the technology. I got to visit their corporate office and help prep for the day of advocacy, which I would do on the 15th, go to Capitol Hill, and advocate for money for our schools here in Wisconsin across the United States. I also, I got into DC on the 13th in the morning. I got to attend the COSIG conference, the Consortium of Scoot Networks, which was very interesting. I got to watch some presentations on robotics and technology in the classroom, and it's something I wish all of you could see. Hopefully, we'll be able to maybe get something in the future, and to see how education is changing, and how we have to change with it. And so that was very enlightening for me. And what I got to, what I got to learn by going to these two organizations that our technology director, Ed Snow, belongs to, is how important he is in our school district and what he does across the United States. Ed is part of both of these. He's on the ISTI board, and we are, we're the smallest school district represented. We were there with school districts with 16,000, 20,000 kids, and here we are with 3,500. But Ed is a major voice, which I felt proud to be there and to hear how well-respected he is across the United States for his, for his role that he plays. Now, while I was there, I got to lobby for the E-Rate. For those of you that don't know what E-Rate is, it's important to our schools, because our school gets about a quarter million dollars for five years, and it's funded by 50% of the funds that the federal government releases. Some of our schools in Wisconsin get 90%. If these funds were cut for a district like ours that is dependent upon high-speed internet and technology, it would be a burden for our school district. So that's why I felt when I was invited to go, it was important for me, because I was the only school board member there, I was the only state representative there. Everybody else were principals, superintendents, technology directors. So they were happy to see me, because they felt, from my perspective, that I could give a good, or have a good influence on the people that we would visit. And so currently, we get 50%. So what it meant, like I said, what it means for our district is 250,000 over five years. Hopefully, we'll get more later on. I also went out there to lobby for Title 1A funds appropriation. Last year, Title 4 received $400 million for the entire country. For Milton, it was $10,000. This year, we, after visiting the offices of Senator Johnson, Senator Baldwin, and Paul Ryan, I got to visit each one of those offices and lobby for this money, because it was sitting there and nothing had been done with it. So of course, all of them were in committee, so we didn't get to meet with them. Tammy Baldwin did call me personally. I spent five minutes talking to her after I got back the next day here in Wisconsin. And by lobbying, $1.1 billion was released this time instead of $400 million. So what it means for Milton, we don't know yet, but it certainly means a lot for technology across the country and schools across the country. Now, what's this for? Well, support for teachers and well-rounded education. Helps ensure safe and healthy students. The use of technology and improve academic achievement. And we talked with the top tech ed leaders from around the world, and got to experience cutting-edge technology. And what I learned, and I think this is going to be a major issue in Wisconsin, in fact, I'm invited some of these people I met to come to Wisconsin, and we're going to talk about data privacy, because this seems to be a major area of concern, is keeping our data secure. And hopefully, we can write some legislation in Wisconsin that we can make our students' data safe, so it can't be hacked into. And I learned a lot about digital citizenship. So for me, it was a very enlightening conference. I was glad I could go, and I got to live in Ed Snow world for three days. So thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else, comments that pertain to the legislative update? Okay, seeing none? We'll move on to Red Hawk Recognition, and we have a couple individuals. Come forward, Mr. Shiger. I'll announce who it is and what the award is, and then if Dr. Shiger would like to make a couple comments, you're more than welcome to. This is the award we're going to present to Neil Garcia. It's a National Merit Scholarship Finalists Award, and this is in recognition of your outstanding academic achievements. Neil?
Thank you.
And our next Red Hawk Recognition goes to Sean Harvardheen II, and this is in recognition of the Co-Scholarship of Excellence Award. Congratulations. Can you think of anything good to say about Sean?
Well, question and a second one. Well done. Obviously, he's recognized, he was nominated locally and judged and rated reasonably and through the state. And so again, by an example of a young man, as well as academically, socially, behaviorally, et cetera. And so again, very rare opportunity and well-done. Well deserved. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to subtitle two, the Human Resources Committee Report, and Karen will present that this evening.
Yeah, I think it is. Yeah, it sounds like it.
No, it's not coming through. Can you guys hear me? Okay. The Human Resources Committee met on April 13th with members from the Milton Education Association to negotiate for the 2018-2019 teacher contract. At that meeting, we offered, we being Human Resources Committee and the board, offered a 2.13% raise, which was the CPI, to their base wages from 2017-2018 school year. The representatives took that back to the teacher body, and last Thursday, last Thursday, that was ratified. So what we are looking for now is actually B, a potential motion to accept the master agreement as it was presented.
Did you do that as a form of a motion?
Sure. I would like to make a motion that we approve the 2018-2019 Milton Education Association master agreement.
Okay, we have a motion by Karen. Do I have a second?
I'll circle it.
Okay, Don? I have a motion, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seeing none? Pass unanimously. The second part, B, discussion possible action on the, okay, we did that, the master agreement part of it, so. Okay, anything else from the Human Resource Committee?
Nope, none at this time.
Okay, thank you, Karen. New business, the first item under new business is discussion of possible action on high school extended field trip requests. Mr. Billhorn.
All right, good evening. In your packets, you have three new requests. These are for all overnight trips, some big ones in there. Now, we have three students on the FFA who are going to a dairy judging contest. They've qualified to go to Glasgow, Scotland. They'll be this summer. The History Club trip, the annual History Club trip, 90 students going to Charleston next fall, and then also this summer, the FBLA, the national convention, 10 students going to Maryland, as per district policy. We do need your approval for those trips.
Do you know if they need a chaperone to go to Scotland there, Mr. Billhorn?
I think they've got that covered.
Oh, okay. Thank you, though.
I'd like to extend thanks to the Milton FFA alumni as part of their auction. They're actually helping those students cover the cost for that, so I'd like to extend our thanks to them for doing it.
And I make a motion that we accept these trip requests to go to the various places that Mr. Billhorn just identified.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Joe? Motion made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seeing none? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
And have fun on the trips.
I wish I was going.
Letter B, discussion on board policy, 0142.5, is to proceed in timeline to fill a vacant board seat. In your packets, you should have received the current board policy on how to fill a board vacancy, and I'll just go through it very quickly here. The vacancies shall be filled by the board using the following procedure. The board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community through news media, word-of-mouth, contacts with appropriate organizations. B, all applicants are submitted to notice of their interest in writing to the Board of Education Administrative Assistant. C, the board may interview all interested candidates to ascertain their qualifications. And D, appointment by the board to fill the vacancies shall be by a majority vote of the existing board. So I guess we're looking at what type of a frame, timeframe are we looking at, and having interested people submit their requests to Kim, who is our administrative assistant.
Cam, I certainly think giving any interested candidates a week from today, I think would be an appropriate amount of time to get that information in.
Okay. Any other comments on the timeframe?
Have we, how many candidates have shown interest? Have we had people contact?
We've had a couple, and we do have, they can either submit it by dropping it off at the office, mailing it to us, sending an email to Kim or myself, it's fine, but some way of contacting us and getting it to us. If the timeframe is a week from tonight, great. If it's a different time, let us know, but there are plenty ways to find us, so.
I would also like to, for the people that are interested, not only include their name, but a reason, some of the reasons why they would be interested in serving on the board.
Just first, I mean, obviously, I don't want to delay this any longer than we have to, but a week from today, is it possible we could do it like a week from Wednesday or Thursday, because that'll give time, a week from the time that like the Courier may put in, or the Gazette, you know, get that in the media. I just don't want to sell some people short, you know, at the time.
I think there's already been things in the Courier stating what the new policy is. If, I'm comfortable with a week from today, if there's a, depending on what the rest of the board. Any other comments? What's your preference?
I think a week is fine.
I agree with the week. I'm thinking that way we can possibly look at those things, and maybe in the first meeting in May, then make, move on some sort of action.
Yes, I think that...
And then more number.
Yeah, at that meeting, I think we would choose the seventh member, and then we also would select the executive positions as well. And that's May 14th? May 14th?
So we need a motion to make it a week?
Sure.
No?
I don't think... There's no action.
No action. Okay. As long as it's, as long as we agree that a week should be plenty, okay? Majority states as such. Okay. Under new business, C is action on 2017-2018 open enrollment alternative applications. Kim, I believe we have one correct?
There's just one transfer in, it's showing in your packet there.
Okay.
Cam, I make a motion to accept the open enrollment application as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Diamond? Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the open enrollment application as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Number four, miscellaneous, action on staffing reports, professional support, staff hires, resignations, and retirements. That was included in our packet.
Cam, I'll make a motion on the staffing report for April 23rd, which includes one resignation.
Okay. A motion is made to accept the staffing report. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Karen, second by Don. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, thank you. The gifts and donations, one of the favorite parts of the meeting for me. We have a total of $7,000 donated by businesses and individuals. I entertain a motion to accept these donations.
I make a motion to accept the donations of $7,000 from various groups.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, and accepting the donations, a total of $7,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Seeing none? Thank you, and again, thank you to the, to the community. It's, it's just outstanding, the groups, organizations, and individuals, and how they support the School District of Milton. Without that support, I'm sure we would, it would affect programming and everything else, so it certainly is appreciated for everything that is done. Okay. Meeting updates, board and committee meetings. We don't have the committees set yet, so our next meeting would be our board meeting, which would be on May 14th at 6:30. Okay?
Make sure everybody stays for Kate, and you can mail about, and thank our board members that are sitting down and kind of behind on foot. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I can entertain a motion to adjourn?
Also move.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming, and congratulations to the people off the board. Thank you all for coming, and congratulations to the people off the board.